Good. Five oh five, we're back from executive session. If you would please silence your cell phones and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone sign up for public speaks?
Yep.
Alright, so we'll move to the fire department. Good evening Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees. First on my agenda tonight, I have two part-time firefighters who would very much like to be considered for full-time employment.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to the full-time firefighter paramedic hiring policy, the township's personnel hiring policy, in pursuant to O R C section five oh five dash three eight, we hereby appoint Nicholas R. Batdorf and Brett A. Siglo to the position of full-time firefighter paramedics effective September twenty eighth, twenty twenty at eight hundred and eight oh one hours respectively. At the F F P two annual rate of fifty-six thousand four forty-eight thirty-eight, as set forth in a negotiated agreement with the Jackson Township and Jackson Township Professional Firefighters Local twenty-two eighty I A F F.
Second. All in favor?
I state your names.
I, Brian S. Batdorf.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And then I will faithfully and impartial discharge the duties.
Faithfully and partially discharge the duties.
Of full-time firefighter paramedic.
Of full-time firefighter paramedic.
For the Jackson Township Fire Department.
The Jackson Township Fire Department.
Jackson Township, Stark County, Ohio.
Jackson Township, Stark County, Ohio.
Welcome.
Need your trustees?
Trustees in this wall, sir.
Please.
Everybody make sure you're smiling. They keep telling me they can see it. Yeah, information on weed.
Thank you everybody, families for attending, and best of luck to Nick and Brett, who've been two great part-time firefighters, and we wish you a safe and healthy career, and good luck to, can't wait till next Monday when we need to.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda tonight, I wish for you to accept a FEMA A F G grant. I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion that we hereby accept the attached oats of office for Nicholas R. Batdorf and Brett A. Siglo, full-time firefighter paramedics for the Jackson Township Fire Department, Stark County, Ohio, effective September twenty eighth, twenty twenty at eight hundred and eight oh one hours respectively.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on my agenda tonight is for you to accept a A F G grant from FEMA. And if I could explain, this FEMA grant is for a truck exhaust system to remove the exhaust from all five stations, and this is going to help protect our employees', employees' health, protects against cancer, and when the engines are started, it gets the exhaust outside. And this will be paid for with the grant that you have in front of you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Federal Emergency Management Agency funds available for the purchase of five fire station exhaust removal systems in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, with a ten percent cost match of their award in the amount of twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight cents, thirty-eight dollars and fifty, forty-five cents, easy for me to say. And approve the acceptance of the assistance to the firefighters granted, further authorize the fire chief or his designated to complete any required reporting documentation necessary for completion of the grant program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next tonight, I have a budget module in front of you for the purchase of a new mask fit testing device. This is done yearly to our firefighters and it tests the seal, so they can wear their self-contained breathing apparatus, and it has to be done per N F P A requirements.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to the standards set by the National Fire Protection Association, we hereby approve the purchase of one Pro Plus T S I facepiece fit tester with M S A G one fit adapter in the amount of ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars from Fire Force Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And last tonight, withdrawal of the conditional hire at the last meeting for full-time employment.
I'll make a motion to accept Jacob Morton's withdrawal from the full-time employment process with the Jackson Township Fire Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have unless you have anything for me.
Anything else for the Chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll go to the administration department. Good evening, Mr. Macaro.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening to the board. I have for you a staffing services agreement with Seaford and Associates. This agreement is for twenty twenty-one, and it does include a seven cent increase.
I'll make a motion that we hereby accept and authorize the placement of the board chairman's signature upon the attached agreement with Site with Associates and Staffing.
Second.
All in favor?
That's all I have for you.
Anything else for Mr. Macaro? Move on to the police department. Good evening Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. I have four donations to accept on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept a donation of fifty dollars from Teresa and Bruce Moore in memory of Edward Rohr.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to accept a donation of twenty-five dollars from Larry Miller and Elizabeth Lynch in memory of Edward Rohr.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to accept a donation of fifty dollars from Alexander Van Mettif and Nina Sabrova.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to accept a donation of seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents from Lyons Den Golf Course.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have unless you have questions.
Anything else for the Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, we'll go to the public works department. Good evening, Mr. Rome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening to the board. First item I have under the highway division is budget module twenty twenty dash three three.
I'll make a motion to approve budget module twenty twenty dash thirty-three, new equipment, twenty twenty-one Sierra, funds to purchase a new twenty twenty-one GMC Sierra fifteen hundred, double cab to replace the two thousand and fifteen GMC Canyon truck, for prices under the state purchasing price, and that amount is thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item I have is the truck purchase.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to O R C section one twenty-five, cap zero four, we hereby adopt and authorize the purchase of the attached quote from Tokyo GMC Inc. For the purchase of one twenty twenty-one GMC Sierra fifteen hundred double cab four-by-four pickup truck in the amount of thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and forty cents, as the price is lower than the price listed in the N J P A contract for the same equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on, do you want to explain why we're getting rid of that two thousand and fifteen GMC?
Yes, what this is all going to be is it's kind of a movement of township vehicles. That vehicle will be sold to the zoning department. In turn, the zoning vehicle will be moved into the parks department, and it's kind of a transfer, kind of a shuffle of vehicles to save the township money, and you know, in the big picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Final item under the highway division is the Stark County Regional Planning Commission's area.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the placement of the board chairman's signature on the attached letter to the Stark County subdivision engineer with the Stark County Regional Planning Commission, withhold an objection to a sidewalk variance regarding the greens at building number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it for the highway division. Next in the park division, only item, North Park Amphitheater Parking Lot Change Order, General.
I'll make a motion to adopt and authorize the board chairman's signature upon the attached change order number five for the North Park Amphitheater Parking Lot Project, General.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then central maintenance division appropriation transfer request.
I'll make a motion for appropriation transfer request from code one oh one, one fifteen, fifty-three, ten, education training fees, central maintenance to code one oh one, one fifteen, fifty-three, fifty-six, building equipment maintenance, central maintenance, in the amount of two thousand and five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Final item I have is the disposition of township property.
I'll make a motion that whereas O R C section five oh five dot ten A permits the board of trustees of Jackson Township to adopt by resolution a list of personal property that is not needed for public use or is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired and discarded personal property that has no value, and pursuant to O R C section five oh five dot ten A seven, we hereby find that the attached list of equipment are no longer needed for the use it was originally acquired, said equipment has no value and is unfit for use, and authorizes a discarding of the items listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have unless you have anything.
Anything else for Mr. Rome? Do you have a date on the parking lot? Did they give you a date?
They start today. They went over, filled around the curb cut area, the curb slot that we have. Tomorrow we will see them in place. They will start the milling. That's they were trying to get the asphalt around the edges to get everything going. Right now they're telling us by probably a total of four days worth of work, they're looking at between ten and fourteen days to get it all accomplished, depending on everything settling, kind of going there, so we're hoping, crossing our fingers by the first as well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the trick.
Go to the zoning department. Good evening, Ms. Flynn, extra.
The first item I have on the agenda are three noxious weed resolutions.
I'll make a motion for the noxious weed resolutions at eighty-four seventy-one Kellydale Street Northwest, lot seventy-five in Marlon Estates two, parcel number one six zero seven eight one seven, a point five five one acre lot on Scrollable Drive Northwest, parcel number sixteen dash one five one nine two, and lot twenty-one on Wooded Point Circle Northwest, Scenic Ridge, parcel number one six two seven seven six five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is I would ask the board to set a nuisance hearing for seventy-eight eleven Parkford.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty at five P M for a nuisance violation at seventy-eight eleven Parkford Street Northwest, Jackson Township.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item I have is I would ask the board to set a public hearing for zoning amendment six four three dash two zero and six four four dash two zero.
I'll make a motion to set public hearings for zoning amendments six four three dash twenty and six four four dash twenty on October thirteenth, twenty twenty at five P M, as attached.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item I have, if you recall, we have a nuisance hearing for seven-nine ninety-four Cambridge. This was continued from August twenty-fifth. You should have a photo in your packet. That nuisance has been resolved, so I recommend the board does not need to go forward with that.
Mr. Macaro, do we need to do anything with the hearing?
Just take it, do a motion to dismiss the.
I'll make a motion to dismiss the hearing for the nuisance violation at seventy-nine ninety-four Cambridge Street Northwest.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item I have, we have a public hearing scheduled for five P M. This is for amendment six four five dash two zero. It is Omni LLC, three-three oh nine five Bainbridge Road, Solon, Ohio, four-four one three nine. Agent for North Canton, Ohio Fraternal Order of Eagles, number two-two-two-three. Sixty-nine seventy-nine Sunset Strip Northwest, North Canton, Ohio, proposes to rezone I one industrial district to B three commercial business district, approximately thirty-six point two seven acres located on the east side of Frank, parcels one six two zero seven nine nine and one zero 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 two nine zero nine where Strausser ends into Frank, section one southwest. This went before the zoning commission on August twenty-seventh, and they unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning. Any applicants are here?
We'll go ahead and we'll go ahead and we'll open the hearing and we'll hear from the applicant. I'm going to come on up, state your name for the record, name and address, and give us your application.
Good evening, my name is Eri Galles. My address is three-two eight seven oh, Solon, Ohio. And I'm the vice president of development with Omni Senior Living. Also with me is Karen Evero. She's a planning director for Omni. Could you spell your last name? Oh yeah, it's B like boy, I A L E S. Thank you. Sorry. And I know we've provided some packages, but I'm like, did you receive those or not? I have copies here. You did, okay. So the purpose of our public hearing is really to, we'd like to rezonate this property from I one to B three. And the intention is to develop a senior living community. And the reason I give these packages or show you these packages, do you have the package? I do. Oh, everybody's got them, okay. Is, I want you to understand what we're really going to build here. I know this is not site plan approval or anything else, but we're proud of our projects, and that's why I wanted to show you what this is. As stated, we are under contract for this property. And you can see it's actually made in two different parcels, so rezoning this would allow us to build what we developed with one, and it's really a community. If you look at a site plan, we have four different uses kind of, but they're all compatible and they're all contiguous. One is what we call villas, and if you look at your drawing, they're like little attached houses. And the individuals that live here are typically, in the villas, they start at about seventy years old. And then with the villas, you also have three different types of uses in the building. One is independent living. That's if you look at your drawing, it's kind of a brownish building, it's three stories. And independent living is just what that is. It's people that can live on their own, no issues, but they're typically, in the average age, is about seventy-eight, eighty years old. And then we also have assisted living and memory care. Assisted living and memory care are actually licensed by the state of Ohio, so we do, you know, build them, so to get a license from them to operate. And to give you an idea, just enough numbers, for the independent living, there's about eighty-eight units, okay? Assisted living's about forty-four, and memory care is twenty. So it's not a lot of units for assisted living and memory care, or independent living actually. It's more a continuation of living in a way. People that go to villas will sort of go into independent living. How our project is different than a lot of projects is we believe people, individuals should live, feel like when they go into our community. There's a lot of amenities, as you might have saw in here, we have, you know, a swimming pool, exercise, theater, we have salons, we have salon in the assisted living and independent. We have a fitness area in both communities, theater in both communities. We actually have dining, our dining room is actually set up as a restaurant, so it actually opens at seven in the morning, closes seven at night. But even after those hours, if you would like, we have these things called grab and goes, and you can grab a salad, a sandwich, anything else you want. It's all inclusive in what you pay for rent in our units. Everything's inclusive, actually. All the utilities are paid for, cable TV's paid for, there are no other expenses other than paying your monthly rent. We also have drivers, we have three different vehicles that if you have to run a doctor appointment or, you know, another event, we have events. During COVID times, it's a little harder to have those events, but you know, when we can, if you want to, a lot of people, they will take them to, you know, theater and everything. So the whole idea is to get a lot of people together and to make friends, and not only make friends, they'll have friends. Because we look at the market, and this market doesn't have a community like ours at all. There are some assisted living and memory care, but not what we do. So it really helps us, really, we enjoy it, like, when these people are, they know people they've seen before, which is good. So these other pictures, you've seen our pictures here, and it's really just showing you the interior, this is where you pull the game room.
Actually, I want to interrupt you for a second. I don't believe we have that back.
Oh, well.
Because everything I have is site plan specific, so I'm just going to stop you there for a second. No, I just have, we have basically what you submitted to the zoning commission, so. That's a little bit different.
This is, and I know I'll be back for site plan approval and everything else, but I don't have, so I'll handle it. Sorry. So actually that shows, oh, the site plan is beside of it. Real quick, go back, there's a show, site plan, that shows us coming off of Frank Avenue, and you know, mine is way down into the rear property along seventy-seven. One thing you'll notice in this plan, there's an area here that we don't have really much development going on. That's because we've done the relevant studies already, and it's one of those, so we won't be going in that area.
We know plenty about that, right?
The next page is just a blow-up of it, so you can see how.
May I interrupt you?
Yeah.
I noticed on your site plan, you show a secondary egress or ingress.
Yes.
From the church next door. Do you have an agreement in place?
Well, actually, we met with them, we're dealing with them right now.
So you're still under negotiation?
Yeah, yeah, and the purpose of that is emergency access only.
Okay.
So there'd be a fence, only a fire guard would get through. Thank you. There was a, actually, it was brought by township, there was an idea to have a second access point. We're going to go with a fire guard, make sure he meets their requirements, whether it be whip, payment, all that.
I get that, but I just wanted to know where you're at.
Yeah, yeah, we're.
Negotiations on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We had a route that they wanted to change a little bit, so they, yeah, so we'll get, we'll get there.
Thank you.
Then you can see, if you look at elevations, it's very, very large looking actually, if you look at it outside. The next picture is just the villas. The villas actually are matched the same to the stone siding that go in it. The picture after the villa is actually the interior of the villa, which you'll see, you know, quartz countertops and wood, you know, wood floors. Now again, we maintain everything inside out, that's how it works for our communities. The other thing that's interesting, everybody has another release in our communities, because they might need to go into another phase of their care. The next picture, actually this one I took is in Stowe, Ohio. We do have properties in Westlake and Stowe and Seven Hills and Strongsville and Solon. This shows the lobby, you know, with the piano in it. The next picture is a, called a bistrot, so it's kind of more casual dining. They could have happy hours there or hors d'oeuvres there, it's kind of a more, less formal gathering area. I don't have the, I don't have a picture of the dining room. The next picture is, it's called demonstration kitchen. And we have, we have chefs who are going to cook, so we pride ourselves on the food. So twice a week, the chef will come here and actually prepare food, so people can watch him prepare it and then eat. But it can also, if you have a family, you want to have a family out, you know, out in the lobby, you might make dinner or have something, you can use this room, just reserve it, and it's, you know, for people to use. Next picture is game room with pool table and cards, and there's a fireplace, seating areas, and swimming pool. Then we have outdoor amenities. You'll have, we have an outdoor pavilion, which you see in the picture, we have bache wall, we have the putting green. We also have dog, we're pet companies, we always have dog parks in our communities, in all of them. And then if you go back several pages, this, I won't read them, but you can look at them, it's just everything we offer at the community, you know, ballet service and salon, pool, it goes through there. We do have something which I'll touch on quickly, it's called ForeSite, and this is equipment that we have in our assisted living and memory care. And basically, it's an infrared camera that goes in the corner of the room if you want it, and it just shows the outline of a person and their heat. It monitors the way you walk, so if you change the way you walk, it knows that. It also monitors if you fall. If you fall near it, we know, we're notified, we go there. The other thing that's, this ForeSite is, it's a pad that goes in your, over your mattress, so it monitors your respiratory system. What happens is, so it monitors respiratory and it monitors walking. Those combined will let us know if we should intervene early on and say, you know what, you changed the way you walk, your respiratory system has changed, we might, we'll bring our doctor to, you know, see you. What it does is, we found, in, we haven't saw our community so far, if you look at the communities that have falls and need EMS or someone, versus us, we're fifty percent of the amount, because we're intervening before a person falls, and then they have to go rehab or something else. So that's something that is, we do in all our communities. The other thing is just giving you an idea of demand that's needed for this. We spend a lot of time on that, and you know, Jackson Township and or seventy-five, you're, oh, there's forty-two hundred people. Then we look to see what's in the market already, so if you look at the concluded demand, we're saying out of that forty-two hundred and forty people, only one-hundred-and-eighty-four in three thirty-two, the combined numbers, which is like, you know, five hundred, five hundred and six hundred, would come, would become out of that four thousand amount of people. And then we look to see what's already in the market, or what's coming in the market. And there's free enough in independent living, and there are assisted living and memory care, but it shows you what the support that remainder is. Now, one thing we don't do in our numbers, because it's hard for us to do, is how many people will come to live in our community that they're not the living community, or they may be there and moved away, it's their kids now. And when I say kids, their kids are probably sixty-five years old, but their kids would like their parents to be closer to them, so they can go visit, or their parents. So, that, that's not in these numbers. And the last page just touched about number of jobs and the total investment that we make. So again, I know this is per rezoning, but I always let people know what we're going to do, because I give you many cities or townships, we've been copying township, if you want to call in and see what kind of project we have and the quality of it, I'm more than happy to give you names. Any questions, sir?
No questions.
No? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, so the next part of the hearing, we'll take anybody who wants to speak in favor of the project. Anyone else? Alright, I'll close that section of the hearing and take anyone who wants to speak against the rezoning. Anyone?
I'm going to clarify my comments, the.
Name my address for the record, please.
Yeah. Michael Steele, I'm an attorney and I represent Potstommer Plots, which operates Hyzer Sand and Gravel, which is the property immediately sell.
Hyzer Sand and Gravel, which is the property immediately sell. I'm not here necessarily to oppose the, the zoning change, uh, just, just for the record, I'm not here either in, in support. I, I think, um, some of the questions raised in the presentation, uh, relate more to the site development and our concerns really ultimately are gonna be on the site development. So I just, for the record, I wanted to state that we're here, but we don't necessarily oppose that zoning change, but as the details of the development roll out, we may have some concerns about ingress and egress, especially as it relates to that secondary, uh, drive. So that, that's, that's not for your consideration here tonight, but, um, we welcome some conversations with the developer to try to address our concerns.
Okay. Do you have anything you want us to read, anything you wanna read into the record or anything else at all?
No.
Okay.
You're concerned about the emergency access drive that they were talking about?
Yeah, that's our concern, and, and the, the, and then the, then the ability to kind of, you know, exit the property of the church, you know, through, um, you know, access, which basically has been granted from my client to the, to the church on that road. So, you know, it, you know, that's a development issue and, and an issue we can tackle at another time, but that's the nature of our concerns.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
It does, there's a question here, he asked, what percentage of the people living there drive? Do you have an idea?
Uh, yes. Um, of course, nobody, nobody in memory care, assisted living drive. Uh, and we find about 30, the 35% of people in the, uh, independent living building drive.
And how many units?
There's 88. Now, the other thing is, is, you know, is a lot of times we do traffic studies, so they know that's a requirement, it may not be a requirement, but we do it anyway. Uh, you'll find their peak periods of traffic are different than normal peaks between 7:00 and 9:00, 4:00, 6:00 at night, because they're really not working, they're sleeping later, they're, they, they still go out, but they will, uh, the times when the roads are peaked.
So 35%. Anyone else to speak against the rezon before we get to our question? Right, hearing done, I'll close that section of the hearing and open it to questions for the board. I, I have, I do have one question. Um, you mentioned 88 units, but in reading the minutes from the zoning commission, the number was, was given at 67. So there would be approximately 67 villas, however, that's subject to change, there may be less, but not more.
No, okay.
So is it?
No, what I, what I mentioned was independent living, that's the one building.
Okay.
So.
The brown building.
Yeah, that's independent.
And that has?
88.
That's the.
But I didn't, actually, I forgot, I didn't mention villas.
Okay.
Villas are 67.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify, that was two different numbers I was getting on that side. Um, the only other thing that I would say is chief, since you're sitting here, the additional security exit that we were just talking about would be for your department gated Knox box driven to your guys and gals coming in and out. I would assume that we're gonna require that.
Correct. I haven't seen the site plan and I don't know if it went through our plan revision office yet.
It's a preliminary site plan, they haven't done the formal.
That'll be on the revision letter to the property owner.
Just clarify for you while he's sitting here.
But we will require that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So your, your entrance coming off of Frank is your full normal community entrance. That entrance is going through the church would purely be for fire, EMS, and really, it's mostly fire. If there's a fire, to get trucks in and out, um, they wouldn't.
Right. They would, they would also be able to allow them to go through it, cause.
Correct. Their levels have a key to it, yeah. We have a couple already in the township, so.
And the chances they would be using that as a sliver, because it'd have to be blocked, something would happen, it has to happen in the main driveway going back to block them off, to get to one of your residents and we need to get back there. That's why it's required.
Comments will be made on the egress when it reaches our office, that's all I can say by looking at this site plan. There's some long drives there with little egress and entrance. But it'll be compared to the Ohio Fire Code and then we'll get a revision when they're out.
Okay. So to your point. All right, then hearing done, uh, at this point, I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendation of the zoning commission.
Second.
Mr.? Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, the only, um, other item I have on the agenda is we have a public hearing at 5:30. This is, um, amendment 542-04, revision number six. Um, this is the, um, Maxham Investments LLC, 2055 Heathrow Woods Place, Blackwick, Ohio, 43004, and CW Vale LLC, 2445 Brentwood, Northwest, Canton, Ohio, 44708. They're requesting revisions to have previously approved R3 PUD site plan, let the board approve previous revisions on February 26, 2019. This is regarding a change in the layout of the development plan and reducing the number of total dwelling units from 14 condo units and 76 single-family lots to 14 condo units and 73 single-family lots. The property is located on approximately 52.22 acres on the northwest side of Everheart and east of Burner Dale. And I'll just point out, this did not go back to the zoning commission because it is a revision, so we'll just go to the trustees.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and open the hearing, so if the advocate would like to come up and present your proposed revision. Do you wanna turn the camera on? I don't think it'll get you.
You have a great seat there.
Yeah.
This is a sister.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't mean to do that. It's bad.
We're trying to get your. Oh. I have a cop, we have a cop, but everybody else has a gun, so.
See you for years and not to find the foot.
You're good right there. Name an address for the record and, it's up to you if you wanna wear that or not, you can, you can see if you're free to talk.
Okay. My name is, uh, Mike Tindall with GBC Design. Um, with me tonight is the developer, Anthony, Anthony Gennery, and, um, uh, came before the board here, as, as Joni pointed out, um, we've, uh, we're requesting a modification of the concept site plan for the R3 PUD development. The previous plan was approved by, by you guys on, um, February 26, 2019, and it consisted of 14 condo units and 76 single-family units on approximately 52 acres. So we're here to ask for a revision to that site plan, um, due to an increase in the, uh, the wetlands, the bluff plane, and, uh, the topography, uh, we're asking to revise the layout to eliminate this road here and this road here, uh, due to those reasons I stated before. Um, the new, the new layout, um, would reduce the number of lots by three, uh, so the new unit count would be 14 condo units and, uh, 73, uh, single-family residential units with three front.
Three lots running on Everheart Road, uh, with one of those lots being a large estate lot.
That's A23, which is this lot here. Uh, the utilities from that lot would come off of the cul-de-sac that we have shown there, and, uh, we would, uh, utilize the more or less existing driveway there and improve that. Um, we sent this plan and had it, uh, preliminary discussions with the, uh, zoning department, uh, Jackson Fire and, uh, Stark RPC. Um, they, they really didn't have any issues with it. Um, Joni did say that it meets the zoning and, uh, we would have to re-cement a preliminary plan as well to Stark RPC, uh, but we wanted to get the plan approved by the trustees here before we did that. Um, with, with the layout, we are providing a 45-foot radius on the cul-de-sacs, which is required by Jackson Township for the fire apparatus. And, um, we're, as I said, would be utilizing the driveway there. They made a request to access to the house for a fire truck to be provided, and, um, the developer would, uh, require that lot owner to improve the driveway and possibly repair or replace the existing culvert, such, uh, that would, uh, comply with the requirements. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sir, you might take a look and look on, on your map, is that what I have?
That's fine.
So.
What?
So at this point, we'll just ask for anybody else to speak in favor, no one to oppose, and we'll bring it back up for questions, cause I got a couple. Anybody else to speak in favor of the amended, amended site plan? Hearing done, anyone that wants to speak against or in opposed opposition to the change? Name an address for the record, please. You're welcome to wear it or take it off if you want. You're far enough away from us, we're honored.
Oh, okay, I, I promise I won't, yeah. My, my name is Kevin Camfer, and I reside at 4201 Hartdale Avenue Northwest, which would put me right here.
Okay.
As a property owner, uh, bordering the area covered by amendment 54204, I'm speaking in opposition to the amendment as proposed. The request is purported to be simply reducing section A by three building lots. The plot map, however, depicts a monumental change to the original planned unit development. Under the proposed amendment, the depth of the open space in the northwest corner will decrease significantly. In fact, the new layout decreasing section A from 28 lots to 25 lots actually results in a 328,000 square foot decrease in what would have been considered open space. When the pod was first presented to the adjacent landowners in 2005, we were assured that if we agreed to the pod, that the open space depicted in the upper right northwest corner of the plot map would forever remain undeveloped. Furthermore, we were told that the wooded area would forever remain untouched. That wasn't the case until several years ago, when trees 18 inches in diameter or greater were harvested. Trees that were damaged or toppled over during the harvesting process that didn't beat the 18-inch requirement were simply collateral damage and left to rot. The aftermath was sickening. Frankly, I felt deceived and lied to. Consequently, the proposed changes are being viewed with a great deal of skepticism on my part. Of great importance to me and my neighbors to the west of the development is that the tree harvesting appears to contribute to an increase in the water runoff to the lower lining of land to the west of the development. These trees were instrumental in acting as a protective barrier for the smaller trees and helped to absorb water from the soil. Unfortunately, several neighboring trees have gone over in the past year due to excessively moist conditions of the soil. But of greater significance has been the increased accumulation of standing water for weeks on end on land adjacent to my property. This problem has been exacerbated by the fact that township officials have informed us that easements were never granted the township to deal with water runoff when the Devonshire Heights Number Two allotment was laid out in the late 1950s. I am fearful that allowing the original buffer zone depicted in the upper right northwest corner of the plot map to be modified may very well accentuate our runoff problem. Absent of any guarantee to the contrary, I cannot speak in favor of the amendment. The adjacent landowners agreed in good faith to allow the original zoning change to create the pod to go forward, confident that the pod, once adopted, would not be changed. This proposal is a drastic change from the original pod, and I urge you as trustees to give careful consideration as you deliberate this amendment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition? All right, then we'll close that section of the hearing and we'll open it to questions. Do I have questions? Are you, I'm sorry, if you wanna comment back to the opposition, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, yes. Anthony Giuliani, I'm the owner of Maxham Investments LLC. First of all, just to be clear, uh, whatever tree cutting that he's talking about predates my ownership, I've only been out here for around two years. Um, the second thing is, we meet the, the specifications for green space, uh, and I would argue that when you do a development like this, especially if we do a continuation over there in Glendale, that the stormwater and everything is accounted for through your engineering, and it may make it better, and certainly not gonna make it worse, because, you know, it's undeveloped right now and the water's just gonna wear. Um, those are two things I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Um, could you just, can I have a look at the map and can you show me, I'm there with your shoot?
You wanna see the original or the new plan?
Joni, just, Joni?
Uh, just, just a single, single house.
And keep in mind that while that's green space on this, there's only gonna be one house there. So I'm assuming that there's going to be, you know, yard and other green space on that lot. lot. It's not going to be a huge change.
That's the house, that's on the map, Section A?
Yes, there will be one, one house there.
Okay.
Has there been any discussion with the fire department about, I'm somewhat familiar with that area, whether a truck could even get up that lane?
Yeah, that was, actually, that's the very first thing we did. We, we had a conference call with Joni and the fire department, and, you know, the one thing they said is, look, you probably have to improve that cul, that culvert and make sure that it will support a fire truck, and I said that we would do that. We'll make sure that whoever buys that lot is bound by contract to put in whatever's required in terms of culvert and bridge, whatever they need to do.
Man, that could be pretty pricey.
It, it could be.
All right. And that, well, I'm just going to another question. So then that would bring three lots coming out with drives on to Everhard, is that correct?
Correct. Well, there's already one there, so it's only two additional.
Well, one for the existing, okay. So the two additional then, have you been through county access management on this?
I don't think so. I, I, I don't know what John and his group have done.
Uh, no, we haven't, we haven't submitted a preliminary plan yet to them. So they, they would look at that as, you know, when we submit revised preliminary, if we wanted to get the concept site plan for the R three here approved before we submitted to RPC.
Okay. So ju- just for I'm clear, right, well, never mind. Let's go back, fire department one more time, though. The elimination of the road to the north, no, east, I guess, at that point, was there any discussion about response times to the back of the neighborhood?
No, I, I don't remember that being a part of the discussion. I, I do remember that they wanted to make sure that we had the width and the, and the geometry that they needed, and we wanted to make sure that that, that was the case, and it is the case. They didn't raise a concern about response time.
Did not raise concern or wasn't even discussed?
Well, I mean, we basically had this in front of them, and we, we asked them, you know, do you see any problems here? And they were, and were none expressed.
All right, thank you.
You know, I have, I have a couple concerns, and I've been on board for a long time, and Mr. Hawke and Mr. Thomas wasn't here when the original one came through. And we have a lot of people come in here, and I know you're the new owner, but as the new owner, you purchased that property, you know, knowing what that zoning was and what that R three was, and, you know, in the past, and how we bought that R three. Now, seeing that there, you're still going to put all those homes, all except three lots, and you're going to eliminate the street. So you're going to put all those new homes, roughly twenty-two homes, and force them out on that one existing road instead of the, the second road you want to eliminate. I guess I have a problem with that, because right now, what's happening, the people off of Marzelli Drive and the, and the apartment units are going through the allotment, and I talked to a neighbor or two, and, and they're going through the allotment and going out on, on, on basically Everhard Road. They're using it, and now you're, you're throwing twenty-two other new homes on that and eliminating the road. I think it's a mistake to eliminate that road. Now, again, that's just my opinion. Mr. Thomas and Mr. Hawke feels that's, that's up to them. When that was first approved by, back in two thousand and five, Joni, somewhere around there?
Two thousand and four.
Yeah, I was, I was fairly new trustee. This place was, you know, we had a lot of people here, and they had a lot of concern. And what sold this, this development to the people of that area was they promised sixty-one percent green space. And I just happened, Joni just happened to bring that map. I said, Joni, I'm sure that's the reason why we voted for that was because of the green space issue. And Joni just, you know, we, it's sixty-one percent. So I, I guess I have a, I have an issue with that. I have an issue with the road, and Mr. Hawke and Mr. Thomas, if you, if they have any issues with it.
Okay, can I, I just.
Go ahead.
That was an informal question, I'm assuming.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Trustee Pizzino, first of all, I don't own the property. I'm in contract on the property. That's why we're trying to get your approval here i- in order to make sure that I have all the approvals before I close on the property. So, you know, I understand your concern. The other thing is, I'm pretty sure that we meet the, the requirements for green space, but I, I understand what you're saying, but this development is not doable with that road and those lots the way it is.
It was doable back to two thousand and four.
Okay, whoever designed it, the previous owner that I bought the land from, they didn't go and look at the topography. The amount of dirt that you have to move in the wetlands and everything that you have to do here is way more cost than buying the, the land and doing the other parts of the development. It is crazy.
So it's doable, but financially it's not doable?
It's, it'll never be done.
Okay. But, but again, I'm just telling you, why I voted for this back then was because of the sixty-one percent green space and what was promised to those people and those residents of Jackson Township. So, I mean, we've got two new board members, and they can express their opinions.
Well, I mean, part, part of my concerns, I mean, I appreciate your answer and where you're at. As you heard a minute ago with people over for you, I always go to the fire department. So, you know, even if that, that issue is there, I mean, that's a struggle for me with not having another way for them to get in and out. Seen too many things happen, know about houses that have burned down, some within the township because we couldn't get out, in and out the right way. There's some, there's some struggles with not having that road from that side of it. To Mr. Pizzino's point, I wasn't on the board when that was originally approved. That's neither here nor there, as I'm looking at this part of it for me. We do look back, we do look at the information that was presented before, so that's valuable to know. Obviously, people make decisions based on what was presented prior to. Not having that road in there is a struggle from that side of it, plus, I'm not sure, I sat through as part of the, the group, the committee that put together the county engineers' access management regs. I'm not sure that they're going to give you three driveway cuts on Everhard, that close together.
Well, there's already one.
But there's one, but you're talking three on a busy road, and you're, and also, it's three driveway cuts, and then you're turning around to Mr. Pizzino's point, cutting out a road, and you're going to force everybody out on another one in, in a one congestion point. I'm not sure that'll get through, I can't speak for the county engineer, and just knowing, having sat through that and the things we thought about and what was looked at, I'm not sure that that's doable from their side. Again, that's up to them, you know, the county engineer group will look at that from that side. So I don't know, and in, in that long haul back through there and replacing that culvert to get to that one home, that's one of the issues we had in the township, was a home that's set too far back and getting back to it, response time and other issues. I mean, the chief's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was a major issue, looking at some things along those lengths of driveways.
Well, they, that was one of the topics in our conversation, and they didn't express a problem with that.
Well, again, I, I'm not looking at the numbers, chief knows the numbers more than I do as far as the lengths from that comes, but I, I'm struggling with those parts of it. I mean, part of me, when you see it, sure, you're reducing units, which density-wise helps, but when I see the other parts of it, I'm trying to weigh the two back and forth, and I'm not sure that I'm there with where this is total, this is a benefit to, to that area right now. That's just where I am from that side. And it was not having talked to the county engineer, and I get, because regional planning won't give you that, it has to come from the engineer's office. So I think that would be one, I mean, if you're looking at it, then you got to get that first, because they may tell you no to this at all.
Well, i- if that's the case, it won't go forward anyway. So I'm, I'm looking for your approval so we can take the next step, if they tell us it won't go.
Where I'm at is I'm not willing and comfortable to approve it if you don't know you can even get access to it, because that's going to, that's going to shut the whole thing down. Now, that's all, that would shut those things down, they may tell you, you have to have that road in, because they don't want all the traffic coming out on one road from access management, too. So then that defeats the whole purpose. Now you got to come back and revise it again. So I think I would have had that, I think I would go down that path first. I think you got to, I would go the other order of what you're talking about, because I don't see where I can be comfortable with you can even do that. I mean, I, I don't, I don't particularly think it's a good idea to remove that road at all to your cost point. I wasn't, people that surveyed it, I don't know that, that's just how it was approved, and that, that plan looks better to me from a flow of traffic issues and access from emergency medic, management and everything else. So that's kind of where I would come out.
I, I agree with what's been said by the other two.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm looking for suggestions. Should we postpone this until we talk to the county or?
I mean, you can, we can continue it. Do we have a time limit on this, like a rezon?
Or you could withdraw it.
But this is not a rezoning.
Right.
No, no, I'm just asking if we have a time limit. With rezoning, we have a different, we have a time limit we have to vote by, that's why I was asking if you can continue it, if that's what you want to look at.
I, I'm just telling you the way I feel. If that road is not in there, I, I would not vote for that. So, you know, you can continue, you can do what you want, and I know I'm only one vote, but the residents were promised that, and, you know, and what you're doing now, if you look at this map, look how many more houses you're, you're throwing on that one street going on the Everhard Road. At least it's split it up, you know, it goes two. So, Mr. President, or Mr. Chairman, whatever you want to do, I.
I'm fine, I mean, we can do, if you want to move forward with it, I mean, because that, that, those are still big struggles for me, I just don't see how.
So what you're saying is even if the county signs off, you're not going to sign off?
I'm not signing off about that road being there.
Yeah, I know, I think that road is an important piece for me.
I think it's important for those neighbors, those neighbors bought those homes thinking there was going to be another access there, and then what you're doing is throwing even more, more traffic on that one or two roads going out, Everhard Road. That's, that's not fair to the people who already bought those homes.
Okay.
And that's just my opinion.
Well, and that's part of the piece to the P U D, is we were able to have that saved. You know, that's why it was approved that way, and not approved is just a, you know, a general zoning that allows you to put in whatever you can fit based on another plan. I mean, it requires our approval at that point, and I, I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that access set up that way. That just, seeing those, those cul-de-sacs back there with no way, other way out, and, you know, I, I don't see that.
But there is, there is the Marzella, there are two, so there actually is two.
There are two.
There is two access.
There's Marzella, and, as I was just going to say, and Everhard.
But that's the problem, people on Marzella, all those apartments are going through that allotment now to cut through, it's, they're using it as a cut through to go out on, on hill, on Everhard Road, and now you're going to put twenty-two other more residents on there and eliminate a road.
I'm sorry, I mean, I don't know how apartment dwellers cutting through that neighborhood becomes an issue with this neighborhood, I just don't, I don't get it.
It's putting more traffic in that neighborhood. Do you, would you want to live in a neighborhood that's basically?
You're talking about apartments that are outside of this neighborhood?
It's right on Marzella. The fact that's your other entrance into your neighborhood.
Well, they use both.
But when they want to go to Bell Village, which most people do, they want to go to that area, then into their, our.
So you're telling me all the condominium owners go all the way through?
No, I'm not telling you this, I'm telling you that if you don't have a second road, I'm not going to vote for it, because in two thousand and four, when I sat on this, when I sat here and this place was filled, they entrusted us, and we said any revision would come back, and we would have the right to say if it's right or wrong. I'm saying it's wrong, because you're, you're, you told the people in two thousand and four something totally different, and you're telling them in two thousand and twenty.
But, uh.
And I, I understand it.
Respectfully, I just have to say, we have, how many people live in there now? I mean, it's basically full, and not one of those neighbors from that neighborhood have come here to, in opposition, not one.
Got a couple phone calls.
Well, I, I don't see it in here in opposition.
They, they could call their trustee, they, they could call Marzella, they could call whoever.
I'm talking about the.
And we got this gentleman here that.
He doesn't live in the neighborhood.
But, but he lives in the township.
He doesn't, he hasn't.
No, no, I understand, I just, I'm trying to understand this.
May I ask that this be put up? This was the map that you're referring to in two thousand and four, I was at that meeting.
Yeah, if you, if you want to follow that down.
If you're going to speak again, sir, would you please, so while we're recording it, can you get who you are on the record again? Just tell.
Sure, it's Kevin Camfer on Parkdale.
Can you zoom that in, Randy?
Is that?
Yep, no, you're good right where it is, he can zoom it in for you.
He's where, it takes a while, and then when it catches up, it'll go.
I have all the previous plans, if you'd like, one of the exact.
The one thing.
He has this one right here, Joni.
With, with the color, it definitely bears out of your point of what we were shown as township residences, so what was going to happen to this? Because basically, at that meeting, in some respects, we had been almost threatened to the point that if we didn't go along with this, that we were told that they could come in and mine this area for gravel, supposedly test borings had, had shown them that this had some of the finest gravel possible when the glaciers first came through. And so that was part of, of why the surrounding neighbors.
See, I knew it was going to go.
Had agreed to the planned unit development to keep that from ever being mined.
Right.
So.
But that's, that's the part of the P U D that's there.
You want to slide that over, sir?
You slide it, I think it's backwards. Yeah, you're good, keep going.
Go on.
That should be good right there.
It'll focus in.
There it is. So that's the, yeah, because you're just on the one side of this.
So we have, we have tweaked it over the years, but to eliminate that road now, and I drove through that allotment, and that's just my opinion, again, I, I, let's bring to a vote.
Well, you said, but if I'm not mistaken, that even original has that same road coming out.
You want to make a motion, John?
Yeah. So, yeah.
The motion I would make is not to approve the, this is number six amendment?
Yes.
Provision.
Provision, yes.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion from anyone?
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Pizzino?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I have nothing else to do with the zoning department.
Does this point, extra, do you need a copy of that extra map we just put up there?
Can I have that, or do you?
Why don't you go make a quick copy?
I can make a copy of that. Sure, can you go run and make a copy, I'll be right back to you.
Thank you very much. All right. So, here you go. Um, we're on to the fiscal office.
Anything? I got a motion to pay the bills, please.
All right. I'll make a motion to pay the bills, and, you know, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the September eighth, twenty twenty Board of Trustees meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to approve, oh, yeah, appropriation, I'm sorry. Move on without you.
Appropriation transfer request, it's attached. All right, thank you, sir.
Good. Oh. I'll make a motion for the appropriation transfer request from the codes as attached to.
This is the CARES Act money that we put into the CARES Act, we have established a CARES Act fund, this is transferring the money back to the departments so that they can spend out the list that you approved at the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation transfer request from the codes for the CARES Act funding as attached for a total amount of six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Anything else for Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, I have, thank you.
All right, we'll go to some routine business and the announcements. The next regular Board of Trustees meeting is scheduled for October thirteenth, five p.m. Geral session at Jackson High School Performing Arts Center, just to note that location change. Logic will meet October eighth, nine a.m. via video conference. Those interested in participating should call three three zero eight three zero four two eight five. Zoning meetings, there are currently no zoning commission meetings scheduled, and there is a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting scheduled for September twenty-fourth, five p.m. via video conference. Those interested in participating should call three three zero eight three two eight zero two three. The C I C is scheduled to meet October fifteenth at eight a.m. at the Jackson Amphitheater. As a reminder, continuing with the yard waste debris site as we get into the fall, especially with leaves coming up, to make sure that you're securing loads, not leaving things on the roadway as you drive to the center. And as a reminder, we cannot accept any plastic bags. If you bring your material in a plastic bag, please empty it and take the bag home to dispose of it. Farmer's Market will continue on Thursdays through October first, three p.m. to six p.m. in Jackson North Park, and the Halloween Trick or Treat is scheduled for Saturday, October thirty-first, from three p.m. to five p.m. Again, we, that was approved as the county commissioner's standard for the county, and there are also, for those interested. I don't know if there's any discussion, or do I need to make a motion to that first to have discussion, Mr. Gonzalez?
Probably do a motion first and then have discussion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we waive the temporary tent permit fee through December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Second.
By way of discussion, I think it's great the Board of Trustees is very much understanding the problems we're facing with COVID, and Jackson Township hotels and restaurants are a big part of our economy, and the restaurants are really taking it on the chin. Some of those have to close at ten o'clock. It's been really difficult, and the Board of Trustees, and it's a great idea and Todd's part, I think, is going to try to help, and this is probably the first step, and we're looking at other ways of doing it, meeting with some of the restaurants and talking to them all and some of the retailers out there, but we're going to continue to try to help as much as we can, and it's, it's great that we have a board that understands their community so well.
I think obviously it's pretty obvious that Jackson Township is pretty reliant on restaurants, retail, and that type of business within our business community, so we need to do our best to take care of them as best as we can.
All in favor?
Aye.